Anybody in the audience and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Pam, can you take a roll, please?
Absolutely. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rausch.
Here.
Secretary Singer, here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Baker, absent. Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Hatfield.
Here.
Six out of seven.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have item 2.1, approval of minutes from May 17, 2021, regular meeting. And item 2.2, school system bills for the month of April 2021, in the amount of $7,75,576. Now, accept the motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Rausch. Any further discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Scott, I had a question. We all received a letter from Mrs. Laura Gray after our meeting, and she was clarifying or saying that she felt misquoted and sent a follow-up letter to the board members and to Mike and wanted to make the point that she felt that she was misquoted. And then at the end of her letter, she asked if that would be entered into the meeting minutes. Was that, I don't know if there was ever a response to her. I wasn't included in the response if there was one to her and/or her request to be included in the minutes. Is that something that we would do normally, or if there was a correction to be made in our minutes?
It is, it is not something we normally do.
Okay.
So it only lists the public comment and that's it. So it is not something you would attach to your regular board minutes, nor would be something which you associate to school board tells you to. The correction wasn't necessarily a correction. It was a belief that, that I was inaccurate in the statement.
Okay.
The minutes reflect.
So was there follow-up on that?
There's no correction to the minutes.
Okay.
The minutes are accurate.
So was there follow-up to the letter?
No.
Okay. All right. So if we had a situation where we thought there was something, as a board member, just as clarification, if we had a minutes correction, what would be a procedural move for that? Because I know we've had some concerns about things that were opinions that we thought were recorded wrong. Is there a procedure if we thought something was perceived incorrect?
A motion, a second, like your typical procedure.
Okay, at the time of review?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have presentations to the board. We have 3.1 for information. Midland Public Schools Equity Audit. Ms. Miller Nelson. And Mr. Hogan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
DeAndre is joining us tonight, and we're just so happy to have him here. At your last board meeting, you approved our contract to enter into a contract with Insight Education Group for an equity audit. We're very excited to begin that. We straightaway entered that contract and have already had initial consultation meetings. DeAndre is here tonight to share some basic information with you about what that process will look like. DeAndre will run point for us on this, providing leadership and the coordination on our side, but want to assure you that he has a strong team working right alongside of him to meet all the components of this audit. So in the spirit of our vision, we absolutely want to lead with trust, respect, and courage, and create a more inclusive and equitable culture, ensuring all students to succeed. So that's the spirit in which tonight we bring to you the process for our equity audit. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Penny, and thanks, everyone, for providing me the opportunity to inform you, update you on our process and how we got to this point for our equity audit throughout the district. As Penny reminded us of our vision statement, I'll have it up here for you. Our vision is to lead with respect, trust, and courage, ensure an equitable, collaborative, and inclusive culture, and enable all to achieve success. And this should look familiar to our board. This is our MPS DEI strategy that over the past year and a half we worked to develop and curate with the help of Dr. Amy Beasley. For governance, we would like to institutionalize equity and inclusion in policies, guidelines, and practices, meaning that we, this is not a sidebar. This is not something that we just add in to a presentation at the, you know, end of a work session. It's something that needs to be ingrained into the, you know, fabric of our DNA and just be incorporated and involved in everything that we do. Leadership, part of my task is developing our strong, developing strong leaders to carry out this work, helping our principals, staff, teachers build out their own capacity to engage in tough dialogue, hard conversations, courageous conversations is a term that we're familiar with here throughout the district, and making sure, again, equity is ingrained in everything that we do, how we operate. Customers, we view customers as our stakeholders. You all, students, parents, that walk through our walls every day, that interact with us on a daily basis throughout the school year, making sure your experience is a good one, making sure you're able to take advantage of opportunities while you're here in the classroom, removing barriers for our students and families to do that. Community, we want to engage with like-minded partners, organizations, groups, companies throughout Midland. We want to align our goals, our visions with, we want to work with, collaborate, and again, enhancing an inclusive culture, equitable culture. And reputation, for us, we want to set the standard in Midland County, in the Bay region. We want to, as we're progressing through our work, bring surrounding our partner neighboring districts along with us. So again, we can kind of set the tone, lead the charge, and again, just encourage our neighboring districts to join the work as well. For a quick overview, I'll talk about our selection process, the audit itself, when to expect a final report, and I'll throw up a snapshot of the timeline. So the selection process, we looked at it through three phases. Phase one, once the RFP was approved and sent out in January, we yielded over 18 proposals from various organizations and firms by the due date of March 15. With the initial amount of proposals we received, we had a rubric set up provided by folks in our business office that usually help us look through our contracts and vet any vendors or services that we go through as a district. So using that rubric, we narrowed it down to six proposals. And from these six, I conducted reference checks with schools that I worked with. They provided references, or I'm sorry, curriculum vitae for their team members. We wanted to make sure we were working with individuals that had vast K-12 experience. And from those six, we reviewed with our curriculum team. We had a conversation, compared notes from all the reference checks, compared proposals, and had candid conversations around who was best fit to meet the needs of the district. Phase two involved a wider stakeholder group. This group consisted of students, principals, teachers, parents throughout the districts to, again, make sure we had various viewpoints, various perspectives, all involved in this process. Again, because we want to be as transparent as possible. We want to gain the perspectives of people that will be affected by, potentially affected by results of the coming equity audit. And with this group, I, again, shared notes with them all, kind of explained my thought process with them, and I really depended on their, you know, fresh eyes, their perspective, asking them to point out things they liked, they didn't like, ask any clarifying questions during our time together. And they helped us get down to two, top two proposals. And they also provided me questions to ask these groups for our next phase, which is phase three. It was an internal team made up of directors, social superintendents, elementary principal, and a secondary principal comprised an interview team and conducted conversations with the final two proposals, or groups who submitted proposals. And at this point, we didn't think we could make a wrong decision. We think we would have been on a good path with either. But what stood out to us, as you see, with Insight Education Group, which the board approved, does enter to a contract on, on the May 17 board meeting. And a little bit more about the selection process. What we were looking for, things that stand out to us throughout the equity audit process or the selection process with the proposals, you know, timeline, work plan, explaining how the work would be conducted, what will it be comprised of, their experience, again, in working with K-12 systems. We wanted folks familiar with working with schools and working with the various stakeholders that comprise schools and communities. And as you see, Britt Britton and Jessica Wilson will be our team. They will be doing the most interfacing with us throughout this process. And I know for certain, they have vast K-12 experience. Jessica was a school principal herself, as well as Britt was a leader in the school district in her previous service. And what stood out to us with Insight was their racial equity framework. Just really captivated us was their ability to look at structures and systems and resources, culture, wider community, racial equity in the educator workforce. Because yes, we are educators, we are also employers. So we want to make sure our voices and perspectives, our teachers and instructors are also considered and making sure that they as well have a good experience with us here at MPS. Professional learning and personal growth, are we providing the appropriate resources to make sure our instructors and staffs and leaders are culturally responsive and able to respond to instances in the class, in the classroom, and at the building level? And then curriculum and instruction and learning will be reviewed. Again, are we providing resources? Are we being culturally responsive? Are we able to build our own capacity to continue to engage in these conversations, bring things to light that we usually look over? Again, I touched on transparency. We want this to be a transparent, collaborative process with our stakeholders involved. There will be qualitative and quantitative data collection. Britt and Jess, Jess will be manage the data side, while Britt will be the main person interfacing, connecting with me as a point person and interfacing with our stakeholders throughout the process. We will look at student success data, finance, human resources, curriculum, and instruction. We'll review our board policies and practices, making sure they're equitable and not disparaging any, any students or families or calling unintended harm. And we'll, at the final report, we'll receive recommendations, research best practices, recommendations that, you know, are not cookie cutter, but they will fit the needs of the district. And this whole process is not just to, you know, pull up the curtain and all the, any horrible, terrible things that we do as a district. It's also to highlight and elevate the positive things that we have going on as well. And there will be regular touch points. On a bi-weekly basis, I will be able to receive an update from the Insight team, and I will share that with all parties necessary. So qualitative data collection will look like this. It will consist of surveys, be a broad range. They'll narrow down a little bit to focus groups. The data from surveys will inform the focus groups that will be comprised. And as you see, there's a list of various focus groups, again, to gain that perspective, hear from voices that we typically don't. And data from the focus groups will inform interview questions with individuals. So as you see, the list is who these individual interviews have the potential to be comprised of. And the final report, again, we will also learn about our strengths, some of the positive things that we have going on, what we are doing well, and things we need to work on. And recommendations will be geared towards student success, business and finance, human resources, curriculum and instructions, and MPS policies and practices, including our handbook that we use. And it, once we get this list of recommendation, it will be on us as a district leadership to prioritize and map out and plan about when to implement different strategies to fulfill the recommendations that were provided. Here's a snapshot of the timeline, just a visual of everything I spoke of. And final report will be around December, January timeframe. And there will be a midpoint update. We are still, discover will be best to do that, whether I receive the update and present it to us in this setting as well, or have Insight come in and conduct the presentation themselves. So more to come on that. That's the update. Thanks so much for tuning in with me. Any questions? Or can I take that, take questions out of the time?
DeAndre, I have a question.
Yes.
So when you talk to other districts, what was your feeling or what information did you gain on, on what they learned from the process? And what do you hope for MPS to learn? Where do you?
Sure. Thanks, Pam. So when I spoke to other districts, particularly about Insight, what stood out was just professionalism of the team, the trust and expertise that Britt had in conducting focus groups, really the ability to dig deep and gather information that helps informs the recommendations. And districts, if I can recall, different, you know, various recommendations, various different processes they all had. Some were, used the audit process or to help create their DEI strategy and their vision and their goals. Whereas, unless we've, we've, we've put the work in to do that. So for us, it'll be more, what would be the next steps to fulfill out this vision statement and to meet those focus areas for our district.
Thank you.
DeAndre, did they, did they share any thoughts with you on where they think we are in terms of our DEI implementation? Are they impressed with what we've done so far? You know, obviously, there's room for improvement or expansion, but where do they stand with what we've done to date?
We haven't, so we have a couple of touch points with Britt and Jessica, Penny, and myself. We haven't gotten that deep into the conversation yet. Again, they're new. They're doing the preliminary research that they see online or any data available to them. They won't really be able to get into the teeth of that until we can provide, you know, some of that qualitative and quantitative data. So.
Okay. Thanks.
DeAndre, when do you anticipate we will see some results and start seeing findings from the work?
Yes. So at the midway point, sorry if I wasn't clear on when that will occur, around August, September.
Okay.
Timeframe, we will receive an update on the data collected and aggregated at that point.
Thank you.
DeAndre, how much of the interview process will be done face-to-face? Will they come here and be face-to-face? Or is this going to be all Zoom interviews?
Nope. So they are fully intended to be here in person to conduct as many focus groups that make sense in the given span of time and as well as individual interviews. So they will be committed to come in here to Midland to conduct those interfaces. And if there are any, say if there's things that aren't clear, things that they didn't, weren't able to get to while they were here, then Zooms might occur to collect more of that data or to dig a little deeper. That might occur virtually.
But the actual interview, about three slides back, everything in the right-hand column, superintendent, all that whole level, that will be face-to-face?
Yep. Fully intend for that to be face-to-face. And myself and my team, we are working on the cadence on what would make the best sense to make best use of their time. So we will be scheduling out cadence with those who will be interviewed in the Insight team.
Okay. So if those are going to be face-to-face, I don't, you keep driving at this, but if I'm on the same page as you, is when are we going to start seeing some data points? It's going to be probably much later unless they're going to be doing interviews in the summertime?
Still, more to come on that. So again, we're going to start with quantitative, what our demographics, what our numbers look like. And we are still working on the cadence, to solidify cadence on when focus groups will occur. We would like them to occur closer to the fall, once we get, you know, staff, students back and acclimate into the 21, 22 school year, which is what we see or are working on, planning out some of those focus groups and interviews at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item 3.2. This is an information-only presentation of our general operating budget. Mr. Bruton.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. So tonight serves as our budget hearing, where we are proposing the 21, 22 budget for review. And as a reminder, there is no action on the actual budget this evening. This is just simply me proposing those numbers to you, and we will take official action on June 21. It has been a long road to be able to get here. We actually start working on this budget development in the first week of March. So it's been a solid three and a half months of work from our team members to be able to get to this point. And so before we even begin, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of Lloyd Holderby, her team, and specifically our building principals and department leaders as well, too. It literally is hundreds of hours of work to be able to get to tonight, which is a culmination point for us. And with that said, it seems kind of contradictory to be able to move right into this slide for a couple of disclaimers. While we are giving you the absolute best prediction that we can give you, we have two major barriers that stand in front of us to be able to give you the most accurate numbers that we can. The most significant of those barriers is that the state of Michigan has not yet finalized their fiscal year 22 budget yet. We have seen three different proposals, one from the executive, one the House, one the legislature, and then once the Consumer Revenue Estimating Conference came out and the state found out it had a surplus of dollars, each and every single one of those are under revision right now as well, too. So we don't know what those numbers are, and that is a huge barrier because we're taking our best guess at this point in time. And number two is an anomaly because we have federal supplemental funds that have been designated to come to the Midland Public Schools that we have not yet received yet. And these are large sums of federal dollars. I'm going to detail those out for you in slides. They are in the hands of the state of Michigan. They're basically in an escrow account right now, but we are waiting on legislative action to be able to appropriate those to the Midland Public Schools. And the timing of when those come to us can either impact our final fiscal year 21 budget or it can impact our fiscal year 22 budget. And it really truly is late in the game for those numbers not to be known. So I'm going to detail out for you, once I get closer or deeper into those slides, what we think our predictions are, and hopefully they're accurate. If they're not, we'll have to do a budget amendment to reflect those accordingly. So we are sitting to you, though, in a much better place than we were last year. If you remember sitting around the table last time, I was painting a doomsday picture for you, and we were thanking our lucky stars that we had been fiscally responsible enough to have the fund balance that we did. I'm going to paint for you a much better picture today, but I'm also going to present to you some conservative estimates. So with that said, let's get into some of the actual numbers that go along with the budget. The first is the milit rates that we are going to need to levy to be able to support our fiscal year 22 budget. The first one at the top is our non-homestead levy. As a quick reminder, the non-homestead is 18 mils on those properties. We have to collect those 18 mils on non-homestead properties and able to be able to collect our full foundation allowance. Without that tax levy, we do not get the full allocation from the state. They do not make up the difference. So we are appreciative of our voters of renewing the non-homestead levy each and every single time that we ask for them to do so. In addition, an essential piece of our operating budget here at Midland Public is something we call the Hold Harmless Millage. As a very brief reminder on that, back when Proposal A passed back in 94, the Midland Public Schools was receiving a foundation allowance that was above the amount that was set by the state. To be able to continue to collect that amount, which is $415.31, our voters had to approve a levy to be able to allow Midland Public Schools to continue to collect that $415 and change each and every single year. We do a very complicated formula. It's prediction of enrollment, the increase in our property values, and we come up with a millage that we believe will give us the due diligence on that $415. This year, those calculations provided to me, provided by me to the state, verified by the state, come in at 1.7213 mils. That's an increase of about .07 from last year. Last year, we were right around 1.6486. And then finally, the last milit rate to support our budget is 2.95 mils. That's our Building and Site Bonds passed in 2015, and that rate has remained stable over time. And we hope that it does so as well into the future. We're now going to move into some major revenue assumptions, and this is where we start getting into more predictions. We are going to use the number $82 as a per pupil foundation increase. That brings us up to a total of $8,733 per student. $82 seems random. It wasn't. That actually was the middle road proposal. There was a proposal from the legislature that was lower. There was one that was higher. This was the one that was smacked at in the middle. I view this as a conservative approach. I'm hopeful that it's going to be higher with the numbers that came out of the Consumer Revenue Estimating Conference. This is utilizing the 2X formula, meaning that we are assuming that everyone in the state will get double what we are getting because we are a hold harmless or out of formula district. But we are hearing that with the governor's latest proposal, that it could also be a 3 or 5X formula, which in our math doesn't mean that we will get less than the 82. It just means that others' increases may compound higher than what the 2X formula was. We got a little bit nervous when we first heard it come out because we didn't think it would allow us to continue to levy our whole harmless. But in reading a little bit further, we think that will be maintained. More to come. But we are going to use $82 as our predicted increase at this time. Enrollment is a bit tricky. And if you can remember what I told you back during the budget workshop, we have an enrollment number that is used for our state aid that is not actually our real number of students in seats this year. They did enrollment protection for us from the state. That was one of the pandemic relief initiatives that they put into place. And on paper, the state is paying us for 7,666 kids right now per that blend protection formula. We do not have 7,666 kids in Midland Public. Our spring count was 7,441. So we worked diligently with our enrollment consultant to try and come up with a number. We combined their prediction with some of our models, tried to put a few twists on it to try and accommodate what we think the pandemic will do. And we are actually predicting an increase in the fall from where we stand, in the spring, of about 59 students from where we currently stand. But on paper, fiscally, even though we are predicting an increase, it actually is a negative net adjustment of 166 students from the pandemic blend that was out there. So I know that sounds a little bit confusing. We're predicting an increase, but I'm showing you a loss of about 1.45 million in revenue. But that's because of the pandemic blend protection that was in. Back to some of the legislative movement on that. All three proposals did not have enrollment protection in it, but when the governor gave her press release, she's trying to put it back in with some of the surplus dollars. We believe if it does come back in, that will only aid Midland Public. So we'll watch that closely, and hopefully it does. And hopefully, our numbers come in even better than what we're predicting here for you as well, too. In terms of how this revenue breaks down, the $8,733 reflects the $82 increase that we told you. That's the column on the right-hand side. And you can see that it's made up of three components. Our hold harmless millage, what we're able to collect in taxes, and also what the state makes up in comparison to those numbers. And of course, this will all adjust based on what the actual dollar per pupil increase comes out to. I always show over time our enrollment trends, just so you can see a visual on it. And when we talked about our budget position and why we're in such a stable spot right now, that's because we've been able to stem the drop that you saw that happened over a period of about 15 years. And I am showing here that this indicates the pandemic blend protection being eliminated. And we'll make an adjustment to those numbers as well, too, if that does not occur. And we'll make an adjustment to those numbers as well too, if that does not occur. For enrollment, you can see that the numbers aren't going to add up perfectly for you in the 2021 column. Again, that's because it's a pandemic blend. It does a reverse count of how it traditionally happens. But for the 2122 year, you can see that we are predicting an increase in our elementary enrollment from where it is now secondary down by just a couple of kids and special education enrollment up by just a couple of kids. And that is in comparison to the spring number of 7,441 that I showed you in the previous slides. In terms of revenues, the other major categoricals that have a drastic impact on our budget is the following. The first is in the current budget, we are receiving a one-time stipend per pupil of $65 per child in seat. All indications of that that will go away. And so when you take a look at what that impact has on MPS budget, if we're predicting an $82 increase and we've been receiving 65 currently, the net impact really truly isn't $82 on MPS because of the way that the categorical shifts. 31A at-risk funding is something I want to spend probably 30 seconds more on than I typically would. Because Midland Public Schools is out of formula or we're a hold harmless district, we only receive 33 cents on the dollar of what an in-formula district would. So districts that are not receiving our foundation allowance get the full dollar, we get 33 cents on that. If the governor's proposal does go through, where funding levels for districts all become the same and equalized, one thing that I know that our superintendent and we all are lobbying for is that our 31A funding comes up to the full dollar per dollar on these students as well too for Midland. And so that's something that we've asked our legislators for to work for MPS on our behalf. Just for context, our 31A funding level that we're going to maintain at current for the next budget is right around $560,000 and that's 33% of the dollar. If we get that full dollar amount, it could be truly impactful in the way that we could help remediate students and get some critical funding into the hands of at-risk learners. We are happy to know that our 31N funding is going up drastically as well. This is designed to support students within the social emotional learning realms. It looks like we're going to be able to employ three full-time staff members dedicated solely to that for next year. And that funding stream increasing by 75% will help us do that and get some help to students that we know need it. Federal grants, we are going to roll at 85% of where they are in fiscal year 21. And retirement offsets, we are going to assume the same as well because we have not heard that they are planning on increasing those rates drastically for us. Here's where I need to slow down a little bit and hopefully my crystal ball is clear on this and my predictions are accurate. But before I even get into it, the good news is the money will come to Midland Public Schools. The bad news is we don't know specifically when it's going to. So it could be this fiscal year, it could be next fiscal year. But here's our assumptions. ESRC 2 is a line of funding that we know for Midland Public Schools is going to bring approximately $2.85 million into us. This has already been given to the state of Michigan by the federal government. It is in the state of Michigan, basically an escrow account right now. And they have agreed that they will allow us to apply for 43.6% of those funds at this point in time. Penny helped us by putting that application in about a month and a half ago. It's sitting in application phase and we are waiting for a green checkmark to show up next to it for us to be able to use that dollar amount, 1.245 million of it, to offset some of the excess COVID expenses that we've had this year. I'm predicting and I have faith that that will get a green checkmark next to it, that we'll be able to realize those funds in this fiscal year. But I'm not putting any faith that we will be allocated the second amount, the 56.4%. Or even if it is allocated, our ability to get the application in and approved by the time June 30th rolls around, I think is pretty much a certain impossibility for us to happen. So I've built 1.245 in revenues into the current fiscal year's budget. You'll see that at the amendment that comes to you in the next meeting. And I've moved the 1.6 million or the second 56.4% of that into the budget that I'm talking about tonight, our fiscal year 22. It gets a little bit more complex when we talk about ESRC 3. This is the largest relief package that we know is going to be coming to the Midland Public Schools. The numbers have been released and we're confident they're going to be in the range of 6.4 million dollars. As the state has not yet allocated ESRC 2, you can assume as well, which is true, that they have not yet allocated ESRC 3 as well. Those dollars are also in the state's hands. We are awaiting guidance on when we are going to be able to apply for those funds. That guidance has not yet arrived. There's also a little bit of debate on when the expenditure period is for these funds. On paper, most of the documents will say that by September of 2023, all 6.4 million of those dollars are going to need to be spent. We've also seen people want to apply some language of something called the tidying amendments that could extend that out to an expenditure period of September of 2024. The main intention of these funds though, is to be spent soon to help kids recover from pandemic learning loss. So when we were planning next year's budget, we have allocated approximately half of these dollars in the fiscal year 22 budget and planning to carry the second half of that into the fiscal year 23 budget. So in next year's budget, you will see half of the ESRC 3 dollars. And if I go back the slide, you'll see the 43.6% of the 1.24 in fiscal year 21. And you'll see the 56.4% in the fiscal year 22. So I know that was a bit of a mouthful. And again, those are our predictions and we hope that we've predicted right. But if we didn't, again, the good news is that all of those dollars are going to come to Midland Public Schools eventually. It's just how they look on our books and how we end with this fiscal year and how we carry into the next fiscal year as well too. Okay, so moving on. In all, our general fund revenues come to 86.8 million dollars. This is actually a reduction of about 2.6 million dollars from where we were this year. And the primary driver behind that revenue reduction was the loss of enrollment that I showed you a couple of slides back, in addition to some of the categorical grants going away. We could have inflated this to 89 million dollars by allocating all of the ESRC 3 dollars, but we didn't think that that was fiscally responsible to do. We wanted to make sure that we spread that over two years that so we could continue some of our interventions into the future. So we're going to shift gears now. That was revenues. We'll talk about expenditures. And for expenditures, Mr. Cooper invented something called the BOD process or the Balance Our Budget Process. We'll continue that acronym even in his retirement. And that's those meetings that I talked about where we talk with every single building, every single principal, every single department, and truly build a zero-based need-based budget for the next year. Those needs revealed expenditures, it will be about 6% in that area over where we were in 2122. You'll also see an increase for salaries for employees, averaging from 2 to 4% based on the employee group, steps and lane movements for employees, and an increase in medical, dental, vision and life at 10%. In the April session, when we were doing our budget workshop, I gave you a prediction of 7%. And we've seen a couple of increases from partners that have been in the 15%-ish range. So we upped this a little bit to make sure that we are close if that does come to fruition. We do not have those rates yet and we'll continue to watch that and adjust if we need to. Other major expenditure assumptions include our continuing contribution to our HSAs for our employees at the typical time periods in January and September. Our Title I and II at 85% as we said before. Our retirement rates, they do continue to climb. We are now at 29% of payroll as a weighted average as our contribution to retirement. And UAAL is a fancy acronym for unfunded actuarial accrued liability, which is a way of saying that the retirement system has assets and there are pensions accrued and there's a difference between the two of them. And it's upon the districts to be able to make up that difference. There's a cap in how much of that difference that we have to make up. And we believe that that cap is going to raise by about half of a percent. And so that's what we've built into our budget. And staffing is an ongoing work in progress for us as well too. We continue to staff to be able to reflect what we're seeing in enrollment trends. And enrollment continues to be out of the norm for us this year as we know that there are still people that are waiting to see what the conditions of the pandemic are for next year before they be able to come to MPS. So we'll continue to adjust our staffing accordingly. This slide dives a little bit deeper back into those ESRC dollars that I was talking about. Remember I said that I'm going to allocate certain ESRC 2 dollars and ESRC 3 dollars into next year's budget? Those come out to a little bit north of 4.8 million dollars. And I wanted to show the board where we are allocating those dollars for next year. We are putting approximately 71% of those dollars directly into remediation efforts, into things like our summer learning programming, staffing, tutoring, and all those things that we know that we can do to help students recover any learning losses from the pandemic. Operations are about 19 and 3/4%. Technology instructional and infrastructure gets around 37% of those dollars and some residual curriculum items that we will need as well at around 2% of those dollars. Once our return to learn plans become clearer as the summer progresses, then we can refine these numbers a little bit in budget amendment time, we will make those adjustments accordingly. So when all is said and done on expenditure changes, we actually have a drop in expenditures of almost $5 million from the current year. And it is spread out over our salary, over all the categories that you see up here. But the bulk of it, 2.7 in benefits and about 1.2 million dollars in salaries, comes from a couple of reasons. We are very stipend-heavy this year. If you remember, we forged letters of agreement with our association to help us with our return to learn plan and compensated our employee groups for those, as well as paying for things like lunches and supervising lunches in the classroom. So a lot of those salaries are coming off of our books. In addition, we don't have some of the capital purchases that we did at the beginning. If you remember the influx of desk shields and temperature scanners, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of the COVID relief dollars, you could see 70% of them were put into the classroom versus infrastructural things that we had before. I know that these are a little bit hard on the eyes, but I want to boil down to the important part of the breakdown of our 89.3 million dollars in expenditures predicted for next year. The important part of this slide is that when you group the items together, over 3/4 or 76.3% of our budget is going to directly support student and instructional supports. So it shows that we're putting a bulk of our dollars into that important arena. This next slide is a reminder to us as an organization that we are a service-based business. Our asset is our employees. And when you group these together, it shows you that 85% of our expenditures of the 89 million dollars is going directly to salaries and benefits. So while the other 15% sometimes consumes a lot of our time in terms of purchasing of capital items, et cetera, it really is not the bulk of what our organization is. We are an employee-based organization and that's where the bulk of our salaries and benefits go to. So when this all boils down, I give you a general fund snapshot. It's the items in the red in the middle column. The difference between our expected revenues and our expected expenditures is a deficit of approximately 2.5 million dollars. Every single year, we do have variance in our budget. And historically, we do a conservative estimate at this time of around 1.5%. That's 1.5% of our expenditures. So when you take 1.5% of 89.3 million dollars, we expect that we'll have a variance in the range of about 1.3, which puts you at an anticipated shortfall at this point in time of about 1.2 million dollars. And again, for reflection, I sat here last year and I gave you a prediction of a projected deficit of 9.7 million dollars. So we're painting a much better picture for you. We're not out of the woods. A lot of this is supported by some of the federal stimulus dollars that are out there, but there are direct expenditures that are directly related to that as well too. I also do want to spend a little bit of extra time on the bottom line numbers as well too. Know that the position that's being represented in terms of where our fund balance is going to end up is based on the numbers that I presented to you at the January estimate. So the January budget estimate predicted us at around a 3.29 million dollar deficit at the end of this year. Our business office team has been working around the clock on the budget amendment that will come to you in June. And we will have a new number that goes in there. I don't have it right now. But when I do, when we come to the 21st, I will present to you what I believe our net position will be at the end of the year and make adjustments to those numbers in accordance as well too. So the numbers that are painted there are based on the January amendment. In a couple of weeks, we'll have updated numbers for you there, which we believe will paint a much better fiscal picture than what's up on that board. With the disclaimer footnote, that depending on what happens with those federal stimulus dollars, that picture could change as well too. So there's a lot up in the air on that. Before we wrap up, we always give you a history on a couple of things. First, our fund balance. And we are probably going to leave on this graph over time, the pandemic expenditure surge notation. So when boards are looking at this in 20 years and going, what in the world happened there? They'll know that our numbers and our formulas kind of went a little bit odd for a while. And that directly is reflected into this chart as well too. Someone's going to take a look at the 2021 school year and say, who in the world predicted a 9.4 million dollar deficit? Because when it comes to the final audit and change, we're hoping that that sell is very close to green. Probably one of the most drastic swings in MPS history, but a lot has changed in 12 months. And we also show this to remind the board as well too, that it's actually out of the norm to adopt a surplus budget at the beginning of the year. But we've changed the trend on that. It has become the norm for us to end up in the green at the end of the audit. That's not always going to happen, but our ability to do that fiscally over the past five or six fiscal years has put us in the position where we were able to absorb and weather the storm if that 9.4 million dollar deficit actually came to reality. And it also put us in a position to be able to offer the compensation raise levels that you saw in the salary letter that we'll propose to you later on this evening. We'll continue to adjust this as we know what those final numbers come into. There is one more important piece that I'd like to point out on this slide as well too. We are still far from our high point. Our high point of funding was $8,904 per student. If my prediction comes true at $82 increase, we are still $171 per student below that mark in terms of where we were at our high point in MPS per student funding. And we always put this slide in here as well too, to remind us all to keep advocating for funding for the public schools in Michigan. What this graph shows you is if our foundation allowance here in the public schools would have actually kept up with the Consumer Price Index increases. And so currently at this point in time, if our predictions come through, there would still be a gap of $3,156 per student gap in between where proposal A intended to go and where we currently stand. And that is a true testament to the Board of Education and to all of the diligent employees that we are in such a great financial position in terms of where we are without receiving revenues that have been adjusted over time. And so with that said, I'll wrap up my formal presentation and happy to entertain any questions that you all may have.
I've got a question.
Sure.
When you talked about the 31A at-risk funding and how you're lobbying, lancing for for those monies to follow the student in essence, that's something we can do as well. So I was just going to encourage our other board members to write a letter to our legislators. You all are welcome to write a letter as well. That's important finance, important money for us. So they do listen. And when a community speaks, especially several people speak, it does make an impact. So the money should follow the kids. It should not matter what zip code you live in to be able to get that money.
I appreciate that advocacy reminder. It's very important to us and I know that Penny and her team can make that very impactful on students.
Thank you.
A small add, when we were able to, just three or four years ago, get in that fund, we've never been able to do that. They did so when they had a surplus and they at the time said that we can get you 33%. And when we get another surplus, we'll catch you up. So when the governor's proposing balancing the foundation allowance, I think they should also use some of that surplus to balance at-risk funding for all districts.
Great. No, great presentation. The last five years have been fantastic to be able to involve our educators in the building level as well as our administrators in using the BOD method and really balancing our budget. And I gives everybody skin in the game and an important role in making this happen. And ending up in the green is why we were able to do so many things outside of the box this year. So thank you.
Hey Brian, since this is truly the budget meeting, I don't know if you could do the Cliff Notes version just for the people that are going to watch video and/or the people that are here. When you talk about out of formula, hold harmless, those types of things that, and talking about why we only see 50 cents on the dollar compared to your, the 2X formula and things, how we differ from other districts that are getting the full amount.
Sure. Yeah, actually, I'm going to go back a slide to try and enhance the Cliff Notes version for you.
Okay.
Just a little bit to try and. Just a little bit to try and explain how this works. And I won't get into the nitty-gritty. I'll try and stay surface-level on it for you as well, too.
Okay.
And if you look all the way on the right-hand side, if you can actually see in the right hand, I'm predicting eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per student. That is above what the highest foundation level amount is for the state of Michigan right now. And the only reason that we can be above that is because our voters back in, I believe it was ninety-four, ninety-five, Mr. Sherrill, correct me on that.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, thank you, approved us to be able to collect a levy to collect four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents per student. Now, at that time, my exact memory's going to be off on that, but it was around somewhere, around five point something mills that we had to levy to be able to collect that amount. Well, since ninety-four, property values increased, right? As property values increase and our enrollment decreases, the amount that we have to levy to the public actually goes down pretty consistently. We fluctuate a little bit. We've been in that one point six to one point eight range now for a couple of years, but over time, it continues to go down. So that four hundred and fifteen dollars is by the generosity of our taxpayers. When you look at the other two components of that, what we are expected to raise by our non-Homestead millage, our eighteen mills that we have to by law raise to make up our full foundation, we have a very large tax base because of the businesses that are here. And so we are, we raise a large sum of money from that, and what we are expected to raise, we have to collect, and that large sum of money makes the state's obligation for that state aid payment less than would be in a community that does not have that business base to it. So what it costs the state for us per student is less based on a direct result of the property values and the businesses that are located within the Midland Public Schools.
Hence what you receive, hence what Midland Public receives from the state is a smaller amount than other base foundation districts.
Correct.
So they get more aid from the state and less local. And you can see our local is quite large.
Yeah, in comparison.
So what would the top line look at, look like in another district? What could that number be potentially in?
Yeah, so take away the hold harmless, they don't have that, so that goes right into that base foundation of fifty-six, ninety-six. You add that there, just doing some rough math, math there. They would have a non-Homestead eighteen mil. I don't know of any district that doesn't renew that because you don't get your full but their dollar amount they collect in most communities would be significantly lower, particularly rural communities because they don't have that industrial tax base.
In sans the Cliff Notes version, if you really want to get bored, there's, there's a payment called twenty J that you see back there in oh-eight, oh-nine. That's a whole nother hour-long presentation that I'm sure the folks in the audience don't want to hear tonight. And that kind of ties into, because if someone is doing the math in their head and you say, well, the four hundred and fifteen dollars doesn't, it doesn't, because it had to do with increases above the rate inflation, and again, a whole nother hour that I'll spare everyone for. And we can explain that piece as well, too, at, at a different time. But there is usually a minimum and a maximum foundation. I don't have that number off-head right now, Mike, what it is, because our hold harmless is different, and I've never truly, honestly, looked at it because of where our.
Been a while since I've.
But the governor is proposing eliminating that and having all max.
So a base foundation district would get five times the eighty-two dollars, for example.
To bring everyone out.
They'd get, they'd get four or five hundred dollars per student, and we'd get eighty-two.
Okay. The other question or statement I had is about the S R three funds. The dollar amount that you're showing for us is, is a chunk of change, but other districts throughout the area and throughout the state could see a significant amount of money. How is that decided? So I think basically, public schools is a twenty-three, twenty-nine million, something like that?
No, the big winner is like the Flint City charts. Brian, it's following title formulas.
Okay.
And so that's those students who are found under the federal grants, which Penny handles, to be of need. And so, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, sure. To reiterate what Mr. Sherrill said, it was based on the Title I A distribution formula.
Okay.
So basically, what that means is the higher poverty, concentration of poverty within your school district, the higher amount of money that you would get. And so while I, I do not at all ever want to be perceived as not being appreciative of the six million, trust me, I am. It's a blessing, and we're going to do great things with it for kids. There are school districts, as Mr. Sherrill mentioned, I believe, Flint's around ninety-nine million. I know that the Detroit Public, I believe, it has a B, it's a billion dollars as well, too. And so there are disparities in the amount of money that districts are getting. And so we're planning forward with what we have and trying to do great things with it, but there are some districts that are getting very, very large sums of money, and hopefully they can do great things with their kids as well with it as well, too. Hence why you saw a lot of movement to try and extend the expenditure period. If we had a sum of money for ninety-nine million dollars, I sure would want three years to spend that versus to actually lobbying for more. So you can see where some of that advocacy is coming from. You want to spread those benefits for kids out as long as you possibly can.
And S R three, are we going to use some of that for our loss of learning, our summer school, those types of things?
That is correct. We have about half of that planned, about seventy-some-odd percent of it is planned for next year. Of the expenditures for next year, if you remember back to that slide, we're planning on using half of that next fiscal year and the other half the following.
Okay.
Unless we learn that the expenditure period has moved to three years, then we may revise that model, and we might break it up a little bit as well, too. But a lot of that is going to be analysis by Penny's team, working on, you know, how much of a dosage do we give and what concentration and what longevity do we need to sustain some of these initiatives? And that's also what we have a fund balance as well for as well. And if we need to sustain some of these initiatives past those dollars, that's decisions that we can recommend to the board as well.
You know, the pandemic, they really like to use the term learning opportunity loss. And so what was really lost during that, particularly last spring, a year ago, spring of March, when we were initially shut down, was opportunities were lost. And so this grant in these funds will be giving more opportunities to students to that. And so when you give opportunities and the gains, the gain, you cannot make the gain of what occurred during the pandemic in just a few short months. And so we all know as educators, this is more of a marathon than a sprint, and it's the more opportunities we can give to gain back those opportunities that were lost during the pandemic.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Bruton, thank you very much. We appreciate all the hard work.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item three point three, everybody. This is the public hearing of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two general operating budget. And at this point, if anybody would like to come up and comment on the budget only, you are certainly welcome to do so at this time. Nobody wants to talk budget. Okay, we'll move on. Next up, we have requests to address the board. This one, as always, folks, be mindful of the five minutes. We are here as a board to listen to you, but we will not be engaging in active dialogue. So that being said, Ms. Laura Gray, you are number one on our list. And ma'am, the floor is yours. Nice to see you.
Thank you. My name's Laura Gray. Again, I didn't really know that I'd be back after I spoke last month, but I had so much fun, I just thought I'd come back and visit with you all again. But no, really, I just, after, after last month, I left with some confusion. I stayed through the end of the meeting, and there were some comments made about my comments that I was incorrect, and so I took that to heart, and I went home and I did a lot of research, and I wrote up an email refuting some of the things that were really bringing you forth data to support what I had discussed. And, and, and those were really, I had made a mention of these school districts who had done away with their quarantining based on that it was a recommendation for the Health Department. So I went through and I spent a lot of time, I went to every single website of these schools that I had listed in my comments, and I found where they had cited they had ended their, their quarantining, and then I sent it in an email to all of you with a hyperlink, listed the district, the quote, the hyperlink. So, because I wanted you all to, I took that very seriously, that I didn't want to be just bringing you, you know, headlines, I think, as someone had mentioned. But I guess, I guess I was confused because I never did hear back from anyone. I sent it to theboard@midlandps.org is the address. It's, it's on your website, and I've actually sent three emails to that address. I've never received any responses. So I guess my confusion is, first of all, what is the procedure for communicating with board? I really do feel like that's an important part of, of being on a board, and so I thought also perhaps maybe I was confused about the, the purpose of, of, of the communication between us. So I went to the Midland, the MPS website, and I found your bylaws, which were really helpful. Under philosophy of the board, it says, members of the board are chosen by the citizens. It says that you, that you reaffirm your intent to maintain a two-way communication with citizens of the district, and that you act as truly representative body for citizens in all matters related to programs and operations. Then also, on another page, under relations with parents, it says that the Board of Education believes the education of children is a joint responsibility, one it shares with the parents of the school community. The parents have the right to participate in the education of their children. So I just, I guess my, my, I just really wanted to come because I tried to email you, I just wanted to continue the dialogue, but I don't hear back from you, so I'm not sure if anyone checks that. I've looked under all of your job responsibilities to find out if it was anyone's responsibility to check that, that email, and, and it's not. So maybe it's a black hole, I'm not really sure. But I just know with all the things coming down the pipe, there's lots of parents that are concerned about the protocols for the fall, curriculum changes, all sorts of things that y'all are discussing here, and I know I've talked to parents, and they say, I've emailed the board, I never hear back. So then people stop emailing the board because we don't hear back. So I just really think it's an important, you know, relationship that we have with y'all, and I really hope that, that maybe we can come up with a tool that will allow us as parents to share our thoughts and concerns with our elected representatives here. So anyway, so my question is, I'm going to leave you with a question, because I know that Mr. McFarlane says that you'll answer me later, I hope. So my question is, how is the best way for parents to communicate with our elected representatives that sit on the board? So that's what I would like to leave y'all with tonight. So I appreciate the time that you've given me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next, we have Mr. Eric Kraus. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Kraus. The floor is yours.
Hello, I'm Eric Kraus, and I am finishing up my twenty-fifth year as a teacher at Midland High. If you're doing the math, no, I didn't start in my early twenties. I spoke to you in June, love last year, congratulate and praise you on the creation of the proclamation on changing the system, eliminating racism, and creating a more equitable school system. At the end of my talk, I issued you a warning to the effect that I know the time we live in, and you as a board are going to take some heat, but that does not mean you should back down. I did come back to speak at the November twenty-twenty meeting where I and three other MHS teachers expressed our disappointment with how a situation was handled at MHS that involved racist overtones. I, as last final teacher to speak, felt that you had backed down in that specific incident. But I'm here today to congratulate you as a board on your roughly one-year anniversary of the creation of the statement. During these amazingly turbulent times in our country and world, you did have the courage to create a statement on racism that was very bold, and I'm here today to urge the board to continue with the good works the proclamation statement has initiated, and to allow the proclamation statement to guide some DEI history instruction for the following school year for our two high schools. To be clear, I'm in no way promoting a political view of one nature or another. I simply am asking there's some truths to be covered to help one of the main points of the proclamation statement become a reality. We are committed to creating an equitable and anti-racist system that honors and elevates all. What I'm asking you tonight as a board is to allow our two high schools to implement a DEI history unit that would be taught throughout the entire school by various teachers in various disciplines. That would cover topics that allow MPS to be true to our proclamation. It's embarrassing to admit, but I'm soon to be sixty-two years old, and I never learned about the Tulsa massacre of nineteen twenty-one, where hundreds of black people were murdered, and the town was actually bombed into submission. The four hundred and forty-second regiment was the most decorated unit for its size and service in World War II. These heroic soldiers were all Japanese, and some had family members in internment camps as these men were serving. Once again, I personally had no knowledge of this until this past year. I feel it's important to state that these topics that I would like to see covered should not be limited to just examples of civil rights violations. I'd like for this instruction to also shed light on the multitude of positive contributions throughout our nation's history, whether they are political, scientific, cultural, et cetera. And I'm referring to more than the recognizable heroic examples such as Jackie Robinson or Rosa Parks. For example, names such as Ben Davis or Dr. Chen Xiang Wu come to mind. I had never heard of them until recently. Ben Davis was the first African-American brigadier general in the US Air Force who headed up the famous Tuskegee Airmen. Dr. Wu was known as the Chinese Madame Curie, an American who immigrated from China and had another nickname, the First Lady of Physics. I once again had no knowledge of these great Americans. I have a son entering his final year at MHS, and I, as a parent, would relish him being educated on these and various other topics. I fervently believe that the path to a better society is through education. Education has allowed me to see that even little signs and actions whose effect would have totally escaped me for sixty-one years of my life take on a different meaning. Until a year or so ago, I would have been clueless that a portion of our community would be insulted by a school board member wearing a Blue Lives Matter mask at a school board meeting. Today, after education over the past year, my viewpoint on this issue has changed. In attempt to educate myself, I read an article whereby a person stated, Blue Lives Matter doesn't honor the police. Asked Mrs. Sicknick, the mother of the Capitol policeman who died in the insurrection attempt in January of this year, "It divides all of us since it is a thinly veiled insult against black people." Again, this viewpoint would not have been received well by me up until a year ago. Today, I do agree with the people who opened my eyes as to why the mask is viewed by members of our community as insulting. However, with this viewpoint, I found myself a bit hesitant to express myself for fear of being typecast as anti-police, anti-military, anti-government. Suffice to say, I strongly disagree with that typecasting of myself, but that's not for us to discuss right now. What I do feel strong about with this new viewpoint is that by focusing on education of DEI issues, we can move toward a more inclusive community where harm caused by inadvertent or purposeful actions may be avoided altogether due to education, allowing ourselves to see another viewpoint. In summary, I'm here to congratulate you on the anniversary of the proclamation and hold you accountable to the intent of the statement. I also am asking MPS to allow our high schools to create a path to integrate the proclamation within our daily lives at MPS. You have already shown courage in adopting this statement and have incorporated some great ideas in the past year. I am asking you to think of the proclamation statement as the bell in a school. Bell rings, class begins. Now, what's the lesson plan for the teacher to carry out? That's why I'm here, to ask you to allow us to present throughout the year DEI history units to be the lesson plan to begin. I urge you to make our proclamation statement come alive with even more action. Thank you for your efforts. An incredibly tough year to be a school board member. And once again, in regards to proclamation statement you helped create a year or so ago, happy anniversary. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. We appreciate your time tonight. Next up, we have Lisa Hansen. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here, and first of all, I just want to say it's amazing to see your beautiful faces. I would like to say that when I walked into the room, the whole vibe was different, just the fact that we're all here together as a community. So I want to begin by going back to the original slide. Trust, respect, and courage. It takes a lot of trust and respect and courage for me to even stand up here in front of you, because this is not easy to address a board. And I know it's not easy to have parents come in, and last month, I was a little frustrated, and I know that that showed, and I apologize for that. I will never apologize for my passion when it comes to my child, but I do want you to know that I truly appreciate and value all that you do, especially after seeing the finance slides. Again, let me reiterate, I'm glad I'm me and not you, because you have a lot on your plate, and I understand that. But as a parent, this has been a challenging year. I think that one of the things that I wasn't able to clearly communicate last month is that it is really frustrating as a parent to send your child to school in a mask when it doesn't align with my viewpoint or my values. I know that your job is to educate our children, and I know it's to keep them safe, and I'm not going to go into all the statistics. I think we all know that. We should know that by now, and I understand that you have to listen to the guidance that comes from the Health Department, but it's just guidance. And I also understand that I jumped into the deep end of the pool when it came to come into board meetings, and I am learning as I go, and I know you'll be thrilled to know that I have cleared my calendar for the rest of the year. So I am in this, I am involved, and if this is not the right forum for me to address you, and there's another avenue that I should explore, I hope that someone will reach out to me, because just like Laura said, we as parents are not here to fight with you. We appreciate all that you do. We appreciate all that you do, but we want to know that you appreciate our input and value is, and value our input as well, because it really is, it is tough. I trust you to educate my child, but my job is to parent her. And to send her to school in a mask at this stage of the game is really difficult for me. So as a parent, I just hope that by the next board meeting, or whatever communication comes through to us, that we really understand what your vision is for fall, so that we can make the appropriate decisions when it comes to our children. And I'm sure that you respect that as well. We all, we're all working together here, and I, I have to believe at my core that we all have the same intention, which is the betterment of our children. And I come here each month, and will continue to come here each month, to fight for my rights for myself and my daughter, and I'm fighting as much for the people that disagree with me as the ones that agree with me. Because after, we all jumped in. We did our two weeks to flatten the curve, and it's really been an abuse of authority ever since, and I am really tired of it, and I've had enough. And so he just said, "You are courageous in what you have done for the DEI program." And I don't understand why you're not willing to be equally courageous for our constitutional rights. So I'm here to reiterate that point as well. We need to know that we have choice when it comes to the masks. There's been plenty of time for everybody who wants to get vaccinated to get vaccinated, and there are a whole lot of people walking around our community with antibodies that have survived COVID, because it is survivable. I'm a survivor. So I just want you to, I really come here with an open heart, and I want you to understand that I want to work with you. And if this is not the forum, then, then help me know what it is, because as I think you all know, I'm gonna fight for my kid, and I'm fighting for every other kid and every other parent. You know, I'm not intimidated. It's not fun to stand up here, but I'm not intimidated to do so. And I am willing to talk to you and stand up for all the other parents that maybe are a little intimidated to stand here. So I won't go into all of my stats or all of my information, but I got a real problem with these masks. And I know that you have more power than just following along with the Health Department. So I am really, truly asking you to stand up, advocate for our kids, and, and everybody, the greatest thing you could do for inclusion is to stand up for our constitutional rights. And I will end with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. We appreciate your time. Next up, Mr. John Kowicki.
Hey, thanks for letting me come back.
We're glad to have you back.
I agree with Lisa. I think we're all here for the same reason. And in my notes, I was writing down here, "Health and wellness, safe and secure, and safe and secure environment for our children, our grandchildren." I'm here to support my granddaughter. And I had mentioned it before, I love this kid, and I want the best for her. Does that make sense to anybody? But I'm here to talk about these. And before I say that, I want to tell you, I love Midland, Michigan. I've had the privilege of my life to travel throughout the United States and internationally, and I love Midland. It's a fabulous country. We have things here that some cities don't have. I'm not interested in the powers that be in Lansing. I'm not interested in the powers that be in Washington DC. I'm interested in the powers that be in Midland, Michigan, and for our school system there in this room. Does that make sense? Jeff, you're keeping my time. I like that. Okay. Just a little, just a little quick background, because for my personality style, I need to know why. And if I know why, then I can buy into things. So I'm just gonna give you a very brief history, my health history. Health and wellness, and safe, secure environment. December 1991, Midland Hospital, great hospital. According to the attending physician, I was dead on the table. And he said to me after, he said, "Technically, you're dead on the table. The emergency team had to bring you back. Had you been home, they would, the emergency team would have not gotten there. Your wife would be making your funeral arrangements." And I went, "Great. Where do we go from here?" Heart rehab in January of 92, and the attending nurse said, "I don't want you watching the news, listening to news. Don't pay any attention to the news if you want the highest quality of recovery." I went, "Great." She got my attention. I'm on board. In 97, December, December must not be my month, I have a doctor's appointment, and that day, that heart surgeon said, "Because of the mechanical and electrical condition of your heart, you probably won't live a normal life." And I'm gonna tell you, at 50 years old, that is not what you want to hear from a heart surgeon. But what he's taught me on health and wellness from a non-pharmaceutical perspective, I, I can't pay this man back. What he's taught me, he's taken, and he was trained pharmaceutically, but he crossed over, and he gave me a different perspective. I had to do the work, but he got me down the road. And here's the deal, why on purpose would I put this on my face where I breathe in my own exhaust? Why would I do that? I, I really, I, that's a fair question. Here's the question I really want you to answer. Why would you require my granddaughter to do that? To breathe in your own exhaust and everything that goes inside of here? I've done a lot of research on this, and it's not pretty. We're the powers that be here. You're the powers that be here. I don't know what's been decided. This school year is over. I know what's coming in the fall. It's coming in the fall. I don't know what's been decided, or if it's even been decided, but I, I'd like to, Lisa said, I believe it was Lisa, said, "Just let us know, so we can make the appropriate decisions." Because, one more time, I got, I've got a minute left. My dad brought his sons up to take care of our mother, to provide a safe, secure environment for her, four sons, to protect her. That was our job. We're born men. My wife, my daughter, my granddaughter, and I'm guarding for my sister. That's my job as a man. How can I provide a safe, secure environment for them when I know that this doesn't work? Why, why would I do that? Why would I stick my face in there and breathe in my own exhaust? I said that once already. I just want to really consider that, because I see a lot of you aren't wearing them tonight. So I don't know, maybe things have changed since last month. But I told my daughter, I'll leave on this, I have 15 seconds left. When I get involved in something, I'm like a bad disease. I don't go away.
Thank you, Mr. Kowicki. Next, we have Mr. Chapman. Thank you for joining us, sir. The floor is yours.
One year ago, George Floyd was casually killed in public. Even as concerned citizens vocalized alternatives that would have stopped the murder, Derek Chauvin continued to knee the neck of Mr. Floyd. As paramedics arrived, the four police officers demonstrated no regard for the life of the black man. It was from mothers who observed their sons being murdered in the same fashion who coined the phrase, "Black Lives Matter." Eventually, the offset phrase, "Blue Lives Matter," began to take public root. A phrase that is gentler than the blue wall or blue shield that insulated police from prosecution and allowed criminal behavior of the blue to go unchecked. This shift in phraseology is reminiscent of Lee Atwater, who died on March 29, 1991. Please YouTube Lee Atwater's 1991 interview. It is a sobering account of how redlining and Jim Crow laws are repackaged to seem innocuous. The use of abstract phrases that muddy the water but still result in systemic discrimination. It also describes how public officials can use dog whistle tactics to gain support without appearing to be overtly racist. Sheriff Chris Swanson, a Genesee County Sheriff, recognized the real issue. He disassociated himself from Derek Chauvin and condemned the police brutality. He put a hole in the blue wall and began to build bridges. When a protester suggested that he walk with them in solidarity, he took off his riot gear and marched. Since then, he has led several initiatives to foster connection between blue and black lives of Genesee County. This is one example of how we grow towards unity. It is how we show we care. Gianna was six years old when her father, George Floyd, was murdered. I think it would be unimaginable for her teacher to walk into class with a Blue Lives Matter mask. Out of consideration for Gianna's loss, an educator would refrain from additional harm imposed by such an act. A principal or superintendent of schools would act with swift decisiveness, and then reassure Gianna's family and the community that black lives do matter. School Board President Scott McFarland, your wearing of the Blue Lives Matter mask last month has created additional and substantial harm. This made-up scenario of Gianna's teacher wearing a Blue Lives Matter mask is not far from reality in Midland Public Schools. I heard a recent graduate of Midland Public Schools say, "You will never know what it's like to be a six-year-old and watch your dad handcuffed, face down, surrounded by police because he locked himself out of his house." Mr. McFarland, your announcement that you care about the police was heard, but the absence of condemning police brutality, you made yourself more aligned with Lee Atwater's camp than with Chris Swanson's side. The Swanson side shows that we care. I can only imagine how this alumnus feels. Yeah, you care about blue lives, but you care nothing about me or my dad. Mr. McFarland, I will close with an invitation and a challenge. I invite you to discuss the movie A Long Walk Home, and I challenge you to show you care. We in the community must know through observation that you care.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We appreciate your time tonight. Okay, that is the end of the list. Anybody else would like to address the board, please?
Erin Walker.
Ms. Walker, the floor is yours. Come on up.
Thank you.
Erin, how do I spell your first name?
E-R-I-N.
E-R-I-N, thank you.
The girl version, I call it. Hello, everyone. Oh, sorry, those chairs, we need the chairs you all had. Those chairs are not comfortable. So I wrote my stuff down because I can talk, so I will stay within the timeframe, but I first wanted to thank you all for all the work that's been done this year. As several people have stated, it's been a tough year, I think, for all of us. And just for acknowledging that there is a need for progress. I mean, we, I think, can collectively say, in a lot of different areas, that we want to be progressive in Midland. People are watching and also taking note. Some are letting out a sigh of relief and tears of joy with everything that's been going on. I know it's really hard when you haven't been in certain situations to really understand how relieved people may feel, but I want to let you know that people are watching and do feel some joy of regarding the progress that's taking place in the Midland Public Schools. So with that said, we cannot stop. We have to keep going, so I'm calling for action from all forms of leadership at MPS. Leadership can, of course, look differently. Leadership can be from the board to the pairs at the schools. Leadership can be from the teachers to the students. All of us are required at some point to be some form of leaders. We keep speaking about DEI. I've been and spoke at several meetings about DEI in Midland. DEI is bigger and deeper than simply black and white issues. DEI is an action. You have to put it into action. It's a way of life. It speaks to character, and it shows the heart of the person that's displaying it when you truly know what it means. All the data that we put up, the surveys, questionnaires, meetings, slide shows, policies, they don't mean a thing if there is not a united front for a collective mindset that takes place regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. And inclusion goes from the person that's in a wheelchair, the person that has learning disabilities, it goes from the person that's black, that's Muslim, that's white, it's all of that. Other than that, we are just spinning in circles and throwing out wordplay. The board here should be a neutral advocate for all children, all families, and for all teachers and staff. While we all have our personal beliefs in this space and this position, it should remain unbiased to allow for all the people that you serve to feel safe and heard. I urge you all to truly make room for that. If not, then all this work and all these funds that are being spent are being done in vain. I don't believe, and I really don't want to believe, that you all want it to be that way. I want to believe that we are progressing and evolving. I urge you all to please walk in empathy and stand together in love. Remember what it means to serve and advocate for your community. That is what we are all here for. Slide shows and meetings cannot teach you that. You have to want that, and I want to believe that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Folks, anybody else?
I can't see around the post, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right then. We will, thank you very much to everybody who took time to come up and talk to us. We appreciate your comments and certainly take them to heart. Okay, we're gonna close the request to address the board, and we will move on to FFO. We have item 5.1 on the agenda. This is an action item, the Salary Letter for Midland Public School Employee Group. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, Scott. So there's two action items that are directly related to the budget that I talked about tonight. The first is 5.1, the second we'll get to in a couple, which is 5.4, the summer tax rate. Item 5.1 is our annual approval of the salaries that will be set for all employee groups for the fiscal year 2022. The salary ranges that you saw, as mentioned in the budget presentation, reflect a round of 2% to 4% increase per employee based on the different group that you're serving in. And your approval this evening will allow us to implement those salaries in the fiscal year 2022 budget.
All right. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the annual salary letter, item 5.1. Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding item 5.1? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. 5.2, Mr. Bruton.
Item 5.2, we are seeking your approval for bid package number 21206, and this includes the installation of electronic signs at all buildings that currently do not have them, which include Adams, Chestnut Hill, Plymouth, Seaburgh, and Woodcrest Elementary. And we are recommending the award of this project to two different vendors. First, for the signs to the Volk Corporation from Northville, Michigan, for $182,860, and the electrical work to Master Electric from Gladwin for $25,480, for a complete award of $208,340 to be utilized out of Series 2 bond funds if you approve this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item 5.2 for, as listed in our board pack. Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any further discussion regarding item 5.2?
Brian, are those signs the ones inside the building?
No.
External signs. Okay.
Like in front of Jefferson.
Right.
And these are from bid savings, correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have another action item, item 5.3. This is Mr. Bruton again.
Yep. Thank you, sir. Feedback has indicated to us the necessity to enhance the playground at Seaburke Elementary. So we went out and sought some designs after some feedback on what equipment would be needed. We went and sought bids to be able to provide that equipment. I provided PDFs for you in the board packet that show a swing set and also a pretty cool-looking play structure that we know is going to enhance the environment over at Seaburke Playground. After seeking those bids, we are recommending issuing a purchase order to the low bidder, Sinclair Recreation LLC of Holland, Michigan, in the amount of $40,000. And if you choose to approve this evening, we will use capital projects funds to add that equipment to Seaburke Playground.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item 5.3, Seaburke Playground Equipment. Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any further discussion regarding item 5.3?
Why would we use capital projects versus the bond funds? Just curious.
Yeah, I, I think when we looked at our bond savings and our interest earned on the bonds, that we were trying to tackle some of the issues that were not included in the bond, like roofing and some of those items. So we were kind of waiting to do that study bread and have the total dollar amount to determine what the best projects are going forward. So this was a smaller dollar amount, easy to do out of capital improvement. After the bond work at Seaburke, Seaburke had the, a very low amount of playground equipment. They have some space, but very low amount of playground equipment. So they're the only ones in the district that was seen for need at that point in time. So I think with the $40,000, we were just trying to save the savings on the bond as much as we could. As you know, we're reviewing fence lines, roofs, the transportation, parking lot, tanks, electro plug-ins, some of those issues that going forward with leftover bond savings. And we'll bring all that to you here very soon.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 5.4, this is our summer tax rate. Mr. Bruton.
Yep. Per the slide in the budget presentation, we're going to ask you to authorize us to collect summer taxes in the city of Midland. And what the authorization within your board packet asks for is half of the levy. And so to be specific, because law declares it, we're asking for half of the hold harmless levy. The whole hold harmless levy is 1.7213. We're asking for the city to collect .8607 mils on that at this time. The full bond debt levy is 2.95. We're asking in this resolution for a summer collection of 1.475. Half of the non-homeside millage of 18 mils, half comes to nine mils. And also in that is the mandated state education tax as well, that every single taxpayer in the state of Michigan pays. And half of the six is three mils. So the very long resolution in your packet says those numbers, and we are asking for your authorization for the city of Midland to be able to collect those taxes on behalf of the Midland Public Schools.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Accept the motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the levy of the summer tax rate for the city of Midland as outlined in our board pack. Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding item 5.4? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item 5.5, another action item. This is workers' compensation insurance. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, sir. We are asking for your approval this evening to renew our workers' compensation insurance with the Yider Insurance Agency. This is the first renewal of the policy that we first implemented back in '21. The renewal rate for coverage for next fiscal year is quoted at $81,091.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item 5.5, workers' compensation insurance renewal. Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any further discussion regarding item 5.5?
So Brian, the, the increase is due to claims that we had, then?
Correct. An increased mod rate and also salaries and benefits as well.
Maybe the pool as well. Might not just be us. We weren't a pool, right?
We are in a pool.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 6.1. This is a list in the agenda of all our remaining regularly scheduled meetings. Next up, we have our study discussion session. At this point, we will discuss any points of clarification from information that was covered tonight. If there are no questions, then we will turn the floor over to Mr. Sharrow. Okay. Mike, the floor is yours.
Since this is a special board meeting, not a regular board meeting, I'll save all my comments to the 21st. And we promised Brian will be less of the show on, on the 21st. His role will be significantly reduced as he gave it all to you tonight. So Penny and Jeff will actually get to speak, maybe. No.
Okay. With that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. All, motion by Pam. Any support? Support by Mr. Hatfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Get a little feedback.